It's a little past ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Let the record show that we do have quorum. Commissioner Goddard is not being absent. I'd like to thank everyone and welcome all of you to this meeting. If you all would please stand for the flag to lead. First item is claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion passed.
Moved in second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. We do have quite a bit of visitors and we certainly welcome you and thank you all for being here. If you'd like, we can go ahead and take care of your business first in case you all need to leave. You're certainly welcome to stay, but I know that sometimes our meetings can get a little lengthy. I believe, first item is five, and that's the proclamation, March is the national school breakfast month. You want to use a podium, please? And please identify yourselves for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Elena Hernandez with Baylor University, the Texas Hunger Initiative.
Good morning, and I'm Patsy Ramirez from the Rio Grande City School District.
We're here to promote the role of the school districts in ensuring that no child goes hungry in our county, and especially the importance of breakfast. The breakfast meal has demonstrated that that increases academic performance and attendance and behavior at school. So, we want to thank the nutrition directors in Rio Grande City, in Roma, and in San Isidro for their leadership in ensuring that no child goes hungry. If you would permit me one moment, just to recognize Ms. Patsy Ramirez of the Rio Grande City, C-I-S-D, for her leadership in promoting the National School Breakfast Week. And thank you very much. And if you would allow us to present also a certificate of recognition to Cynthia Garcia-Fuentes of Starr County for your leadership in ensuring that no child goes hungry in the county.[181.12][181.12](applause)
On behalf of my colleagues, Mr. J.J. Trevino and Mr. Leo Olivares of San Isidro, thank you, Elaine, for getting us, you know, here, and to Cynthia for helping us out and getting the county on board with this endeavor. As we all know, children that are hungry just cannot focus on their studies, and they just don't learn as well as children who have access to that meal. So, it's very important, and our goal has always been to service the kids, to reach out to as many kids as we possibly can. So, again, thank you and appreciate it.
Well, thank you all very much. It's certainly a pleasure to have you all here this morning, and especially for such an important endeavor. And, yeah, I totally agree, you know, a lot of times, a lot of our children don't have breakfast. It's either too early. Fortunately, some of them might not be able to afford it. So, thank you very much for the program that you all have and that you all initiated. And I know I speak on behalf of the whole court. Anything that we can do for you all to assist in any way, just give us a call. Cynthia's very easy to get a hold of, so just let us know, and we're ready to help any way we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moved in second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
In other words, don't leave. Wait for a little bit. The next one that I see is item six, and that's to proclaim April as Child Abuse Preventive Month by Mr. Canales Victor or Lori Gamster.
That's correct, Your Honor. Thank you for having us here this morning. As you can see, we have a lot of blue in the audience. Blue is the color for Child Abuse Neglect and Prevention Month, and we are asking the Commissioners and the Judge to declare April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Starr County. The proclamation is in your packets. All twelve months, absolutely. And this is a month that we give a little extra recognition and promotion, and we get things out on social media. We'll be having a vigil, and we'll be getting information to you all on that as well.
Moved in second to approve. Under discussion, I just want to add that it's unbelievable the amount of child abuse that we have, as Lori and Victor's office is well aware of. I hear some of those cases, and it's really sad. It's really sad. So, I commend you all for the work that you all do, and the county attorney's office, and everyone here that's involved, because they are the ones that don't have any word in their lives right now, but they will in the future. So, thank you all very much for what you all do.
Thank you. And we also have members of the Child Welfare Board here that serve at the pleasure of the Court, as well as members from CPS, all the different departments within CPS.
I do have a motion in second. Oliver, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Same thing, don't leave just yet.
Well, can we take the pictures now?
We have another one.
Oh, we have another one?
The next one is proclamation proclaiming April 4th as the day of recognition for national service in Starr County.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Paula Gafie. I'm the Executive Director at Teach for America of the Rio Grande Valley. We are a national teacher organization, which is also part of the AmeriCorps program. Part of our mission at Teach for America is to enlist, develop, and mobilize as many of our possible future leaders to be in education. Every year, we bring about forty teachers to the Rio Grande Valley, and we're happy to place them here in Starr County, in the districts of Rio Grande City and Roma ISD. So, thank you again for acknowledging the importance of public service, the importance of service to our community, and the support of Teach for America in this county.
Is there a motion to approve? Moved in second, under discussion. I also want to thank you, my men, and this is from the heart. You know, I used to be on the school board in Roma, and at that time, we had some very active Teach for America teachers. One of them that I complete, or I give complete credit for starting our television station in Roma, he was the one who started it, and to this day, it's a very successful program, and it was done by Teach for America. Great young men and ladies. In fact, this year, I had the opportunity to recommend one of our very own for Teach for America, and I believe she got it. I think she's going to China or Korea, somewhere over there.
Well, that's wonderful. We actually, I was, on my drive here, I live in West Lico. I was thinking of the alumni of Teach for America, and I don't know if the Commissioner knows this, the Commissioners, but one of our alumni who actually did their service in Rio Grande City, he's leading a group of schools in Austin. The other one is the Executive Director for Teach for America in San Antonio. So, there's something in the water in this community that you produce leaders once they're here, and they want to go out to continue to service their community. So, thank you again.
Well, thank you, and congratulations. Oliver, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now Cynthia. I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you. (inaudible)
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
Congratulations to you all. And Cynthia is right, I was surprised, but she does all the work.
(laughing)
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, next, we have (inaudible).
Good morning. Good morning. I like the blue. That's my favorite color. Blue and gold.
Anyone else?
We can put some, Lori, or some chairs, and then they can stand behind us.
(laughing)
That leaves us out.
(inaudible)
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 I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
I guess we'll just stand behind you. We'll just stand behind you.
(inaudible)
We can put some, Lori, or some chairs, and then they can stand behind us.
(laughing)
That leaves us out.
(inaudible)
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 We can put some, Lori, or some chairs, and then they can stand behind us.
(laughing)
That leaves us out.
(inaudible)
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 Congratulations to you all, and thank you for the work that you all do.
(inaudible)
Are you by yourself?
(inaudible)
Okay. Look, I can go down.
(inaudible)
Good morning.
I'm just a brick, so she doesn't want to. (inaudible)
Okay. We can go down if it's the other, because it's a big crowd.
Well, yes, if you don't mind us.
Whatever.
(inaudible)
You want us, the aisle, acá arriba, wherever you want us.
(inaudible)
Okay. Very well.
(inaudible)
Thank you very much.
(inaudible)
Item eight is also from a person that's out of town, Mr. Eduardo Canales. I don't see him in the audience. Is there anyone representing him? No? Okay, then we'll take it as we go down the agenda. Okay. Anyone else that needs to come at this time? Okay. If not, we'll start with our reports. The Gas Department, Mr. Alvarado.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My report is in your package. Just to highlight what the report says, we are now getting full service from the new line, relocation line, due to the 755 loop. The contractor finished about two, three weeks ago, and we're fully coordinated with them in Station 14. Fifteen, it didn't affect fifteen, the one on Embassy Road. And the other one is every three years, we get an outside source to conduct a leak survey on us. We conduct one every month in the House, and we continue to find leaks. It's an ongoing process. But the outside source that was just recently contracted, he found forty-six leaks. It sits within the range of what they find every three years. There are small leaks. There was only two underground leaks. Most of them were up on the meter or the risers, and we're working on them right now. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you.
Transfer station? Mr. Ronzada.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning. I'll leave a copy of my report on the, I also, this month, we did the itemized tonnage coming in and going out, as Commissioner Garcia had requested, and you will find it in the package. Other than that, everything's been running smooth, and we're continuing to wait for that grant money to come in so we can start the building of the Starr County first scrap tire facility.
Any questions? Okay? No? Any question? Thank you, Mr. Ronzada. Treasurers' report, Ms. Penney.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
The General Fund had eight-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand more than at the same time last year, and the General Fund had thirty-nine thousand less than at the same time last year. The total cash in bank was three-hundred-thousand more than at the same time last year. The loans for the General and Enterprise Fund were three-hundred-and, I'm sorry, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand less than at the same time last year, and the certificate of obligation is just over just over one-point-five million, or half a million, less than at the same time last year. Select securities are in order. Amusement machine monies were three-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand less than the amount of seven-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand that came in at the same time last year. The county has collected three-point-seven million already in this taxes or fees, and the unemployment rate is at fifteen-point-eight percent, were once again the highest in the state.
That's on what, Mr. Penney?
On January.
But what are we, the highest in the state?
On the unemployment rate for January versus January of last year.
Okay.
And it is up one-point-five percent from last year, and this year is at fifteen-point-eight, were two percent higher than any other county in the state, and were by far the highest at this time.
And the reason for that, let me explain. The reason for that is due to the fact that a lot of our people that were employed in the Eagle Ford sale are now unemployed. However, as I mentioned in our State of the County, even at fifteen percent, which is certainly not acceptable, you know, we need to work to get that percent down, it's a hell of a lot better than a previous administration that was in around thirty-five percent. So, we're working on it.
I can just add, one of the other things that happened in December is there was a mandate to the state in terms of how they count unemployment. So, that one, two percent increase went across the board in the entire state and the entire nation. It wasn't just Starr County. There was a change in how they now do the aggregate, they check unemployment, and Dr. Zaman, they came from DC. So, now everyone is two percent over because of any formula. They didn't necessarily coincide with people losing their jobs everywhere else. It was just they asked them to now test a wider pool when they did the calculation. So, that's why the labor force is large enough when the unemployment rate is higher. But it's across the entire state and the entire nation, not just Starr County.
I'm glad you bring that up, because, you know, I see the media writing, and the last thing we want is a negative thing coming out of the county. So, but there are reasons for it. It's not because, you know, the cities and certainly the county is not working on it to lower our unemployment. And I believe we have, quite effectively, I might add. But we're not content. It needs to go down some more.
It is not anything that the court did or did not do. It is just a number that is being reported.
Anything else?
That's all.
Any questions? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
International Bridge?
(inaudible)
It was given less. Okay, no action. Elections? Good morning, Roger.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Only thing is just election coming up in Ciudad La Grúa. Having a contract with them.
Oh, but that's an agenda item, right?
Yes.
Okay, we'll cover it in a minute.
Okay.
Federal and state programs?
The report is before you. Do you all have any questions? (inaudible)
Yeah, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, I believe that's all the reports we have. I'll entertain a motion to approve the reports from item A, B, C, E, and F.
(inaudible)
Moved in second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item eight, this is an action item, and it's a proposal, I believe it's in your packet. It's from Texas State University. It looks something like this. Mr. Canales, this is a gentleman from Brooks County that's been very actively working to identify the John Does and James, Jane Does that are found, immigrants that come across from Central America and Mexico, and they lose their life once they're on this side, and when they're found, there's no way of identifying them. So, a lot of times, they get buried, we bury some, as John Does or Jane Does. Anyhow, the Texas State University, the Forensic Anthropology Center worked with Brooks County very closely, and they exhumed a great number of bodies, and they take them with them. It's students doing their work, but they take them and they work under the professors, and they identify, they get DNA of whatever is left, and they keep records of all these bodies that are exhumed. They also keep the bodies, most of them are pretty much deteriorated already. But anyhow, they want to do the same thing here, and there's, we have about eight bodies that we have buried, and they want to exhume, again, the Texas State University, they want to exhume them, take them with them, identify them, run DNA, and hopefully, there's people out there waiting to see what happened to their loved ones. But it does need approval from Commissioners' Court to exhume those bodies, and it also needs approval by the JPs. I don't know how many of the JPs have signed off already. I know I did. Anyone that pronounced them dead has to sign off, authorizing them to be exhumed, but I
Would they require for the county employees or somebody to assist?
I really don't know. I don't know.
It's in my precinct.
So, I believe that's all the reports we have. I'll entertain a motion to approve the reports from item A, B, C, E, and F. Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item eight, this is a, an action item, and it's a proposal. I believe it's in your packet. It's from Texas State University. It looks something like this. Mr. Canales, this is a gentleman from Brooks County that's been very actively working to identify the John Does and Jane Does that are found, immigrants that come across from Central America and Mexico, and they lose their life once they're on this side, and when they're found, there's no way of identifying them. So, a lot of times, they get buried, we bury some as John Does or Jane Does. Anyhow, the Texas State University, the Forensic Anthropology Center, worked with Brooks County very closely, and they exhumed a great number of bodies, and they take them with them. It's students doing their work, but they take them and they work under the professors, and they identify, they get DNA of whatever is left, and they keep records of all these bodies that are exhumed. They also keep the bodies, most of them are pretty much deteriorated already. But anyhow, they want to do the same thing here, and there's, we have about eight bodies that we have buried, and they want to exhume, again, Texas State University, they want to exhume them, take them with them, identify them, run DNA, and hopefully, there's people out there waiting to see what happened to their loved ones. But it does need approval from Commissioner's Court to exhume those bodies, and it also needs approval by the JPs. I don't know how many of the JPs have signed off already. I know I did. Anyone that pronounced them dead has to sign off, authorizing them to be exhumed, but...
Would they require for the county employees or somebody to assist?
I really don't know. I do know... Yeah. They bring in a team, and I don't know if they bring equipment to exhume or not, yeah. But, you know, one, I think it's a win-win for everyone, especially those families back home that don't know what happened to their families or to their loved ones. If they can be identified, I'm sure it would help them out a lot, and it helps us, because it clears up some of our spaces at the cemetery. So, I'm asking for approval. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item nine is also an approval of a resolution, and this is in support of the twenty seventeen State Homeland Security Program Grant Number thirty-three eighty-seven seven oh one. This is from the sheriff. This is a grant that we're asking for. Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item ten, very similar. This is for linebacker, operational linebacker, and this is Grant Number twenty-nine ninety-four seven oh three, to approve the resolution for. Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item eleven is to approve the new vendors list from our auditor. You all have it before you. Sam or those, okay? Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item twelve, Roger, I believe this is yours. This is an action item to approve the contract with Ciudad La Grúia for election services.
It's just, we'll just be supporting them. It's just a contract that's been made with the county.
This is the same as all the others, right?
Yes.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item thirteen is naming a road to Brazil Aldea, Brazil Brazaldia, road by Commissioner Alvarez.
Yeah, this road is off Alvarez Road, and there's three houses on this road, and they're getting named, and that's addressed by nine-one-one, addressing with the address of Alvarez Road, and they're not in Alvarez Road, and they're having a hard time, so we need to name it by itself. So, I move that we approve the name of Brazaldia Road.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item fourteen is possible, an action item, and this is on the status of the Moreno's Creek, Commissioner Alvarez.
Yes, sir. Last meeting, I think you, Daniel Rivas, was here and made a presentation on the Moreno Creek project, and we couldn't say anything, and I'm not kind of bad, and we couldn't even give her any kind of comment, any kind of answer. So, I decided to put it on a discussion, a possible action, there is any possible action, but I, I think she deserves a status update on the project, so I guess we can use that to the, to the federal state program.
On from the status, as you all know, we had to purchase twenty parcels. We've already purchased a couple of them. The rest were going to be condemnation due to the fact that we, most of them are unknown heirs. Right now, that condemnation is through legal status with Lori as we speak in that process.
How long does this condemnation process take?
It will take a few months.
A few months?
And once it moves from legal, it will go into engineering, and the groundwork will begin.
What do you mean, the engineering?
We're willing to hold it there for a couple of months and a couple of months, Lori, and we haven't got anywhere?
Well, we've purchased several of the tracks. We have a few more that we'll be closing out this week, and we just received all of our updated title commitments, so that we can go forward on the ones that need to go through the court system.
What are we looking at before we start dealing? What time, how much time do we have left on this project?
Let's say six months.
We have six months?
On the legal part of the process.
The legal part, to complete it, how much time do we have?
To complete the project is going until December of twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen?
That is correct.
Are we going to be able to meet?
Yeah, we'll be able to meet the deadline.
Lori?
More, how long are you going to take?
The six months.
About six months?
Yes, sir.
Okay, she needs to know, because apparently, they're nowhere, because we haven't gotten started. Now, this project has been going on for at least five or six years, and we haven't gotten anywhere. Nada.
Right.
Now, we drain that water from them, it's going to help them a lot, and then maybe we could get some money to pave Ranchito Street and drain it off. They're just waiting, and I don't blame them.
I know, I came in one, four years, and there was changes at the state, so you really can't put the blame on the state, because when these changes occur, the new people have to start all over again, because they're not familiar with the project, and that's what happens when you have turnover of people regularly. But anyway, regardless of whose problem it is, or who's name it is, it's mine and yours now, so.
And we're pushing forward, and we're in touch with the state. We keep in touch with everyone for the grant information, and we're pushing forward on the deadlines.
And we all, we understand that it's very time-consuming, everything you do, but we need, we need a status report, because we need to tell them what's going on, because they feel like they're being neglected, and we're not neglecting anybody. We just can't get to doing anything, because we haven't finished the first part.
Right. Absolutely. And I'd be glad to speak with her after this.
Okay.
Lori, one question on the condemnation. I know, I don't know about this being that it's state and federal monies that we're using, but normally, once we start the condemnation proceedings, we can put the money in the registry of the courts, and we can proceed with our construction. Can this be done?
We have to begin the proceeding, do the citation, and once we have a hearing, which can happen within a couple of months, less than the six months, then yes, the money can go into the court registry.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at ways so we can expedite it, and hopefully, we can get going in two weeks, I mean, two months.
Correct.
Two weeks, yeah. Okay.
Thank you. If you all have any questions, just let me know.
Thank you very much. Do you all have any questions? Do you all have any questions on this?
I guess we'll talk for a little bit.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
So, I guess no action. Item fifteen and sixteen are budget amendments. Sam or those in order? Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Seventeen, eighteen are donations to the nutrition program, pressing for it. Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Oh, we have some more. Nineteen and twenty are budget amendments. Are they in order? Have a motion, a second to pass. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Did I leave out anyone? It is now ten forty-five, and pursuant to Section five-five one point oh seven four, we will now move into executive session to discuss order of salaries. It's eleven twenty-five, and we're back in open session? The only thing we had in executive session was order of salaries. Is there a motion to approve that? Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved in second, all in fair, please, aye? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.